In compliance with Chapter 231, Public Law in 1975 entitled Open Public Meeting Act, added with notice of this board meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in notice on January 7, 2019. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices mailed to the Mount Le Johnson Clark, advertised in the Mount Le Sun and Star ledger on January 17, 2019, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Can we all rise and reflect?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a roll call. Mr. Cruz.
This is Sancho Martin. Here, Mr. Demeo.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Mrs. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Scaletta.
Here.
Miss Arrow.
Here.
Mr. Conisella.
Here.
Okay, let's have an approval of our minutes, please.
May I have your approval?
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we get into our correspondence and the rest of the meeting, on Friday, we had a, and we just wanted to have a moment of silence for James and Nicole. We had a memorial service on Friday, and if you could all just take a moment. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers go out to their family. Thank you. All right, any correspondence?
None received.
All right, so we're starting our presentations. There's going to be a little bit of change on the menu that we have today for our presentations. We're going to start with our monthly biannual report with Mr. Capello. He didn't pick up on that.
I was going to say, I know you don't feel appreciated. I know you don't feel appreciated, but we really do. You make a difference every day. We appreciate your prompt.
I may have to ask you guys to sit in the stands.
So, Mr. Capello. I think Ian has it.
So, as you were aware, I did go twice here. In June of November, I asked for my biannual report as required by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. As everyone's aware, just the audience as well, part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights and our school district policy is it's, the law is twofold. One aspect of the law is, what are we doing to create a safe school climate, where students feel comfortable coming to schools and thrive out there? The second component of the law is that if there ever is an allegation, an incident of hit, that the school must initiate an investigation. Once an investigation is completed, the school district, the Anti-Bullying Specialist, as well as the administrator make the determination if the incident is deemed as a hit, which stands for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. First component of the law is that, is the incident, what is motivating, what motivates this incident? Right? It has to be based upon one's personal characteristic, or actual or perceived characteristic, or any other distinguishing characteristic. The Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights provides a list of what are those characteristics. You can see the bottom right here in corner, any other distinguishing characteristic is there as well. Besides, there's three components of the definition. One is the, what is the motivating characteristic? The second is the location, on school property, at school function, on school bus, or if it's off school grounds as well. However, if it's off school grounds, there must be an nexus between school and the incident. All right? So whereas if something happens over the weekend, does it interrupt the operation of the school, or the right of the student to come to school? Do they feel safe coming to school? Monday morning comes around, they don't want to come to school, they go right to the nurse's office. That's impacting the student's education. Third is the impact on the student, physically, emotionally harming them, in fear of physical disturbance on, is there damage to the student's personal property, consulting with the meeting, or as I said, creates a hostile educational environment for the student. As you're aware, I am the Anti-Bullying Coordinator, the Anti-Bullying Specialist, who are the investigators. They're all either school counselors, or at the high school, we have Mrs. Cassily, who's the student assistance coordinator. We have two school counselors who serve two schools. Mrs. Tannell is at Lincoln Spring Garden, and Mrs. Del Faro is at Ratcliffe in Yantico. We conduct an investigation. There's three different types of findings. One is, it's considered a non-hit event, where it did not meet criteria for hit, or it did not meet criteria, and it didn't meet the criteria for a code of conduct violation. A hit event is where it met the criteria for it to be deemed as a hit, or a code of conduct violation, where it did not meet the criteria for hit, however, it did violate the code of conduct policy, and that can still be considered code of conduct violation. So, my report basically reflects upon January through June of last school year. Here is a breakdown, the total number of HIV cases investigated were 40. Right? As you can see, Lincoln had four, Ratcliffe and Yantico has six, with Spring Garden at three, Washington at four, John Wilmer School at nine, and at the high school, they have eight. Breaking them down now, at the elementary, if you can see, I'm trying to see that. I think we had, I can't see too well, I believe that is six at Lincoln School.
Four.
Four?
Four.
Okay. Four at Lincoln. There was one that was deemed as an HIV incident, as well as one was code of conduct, and two were deemed as an HIV. Where six investigations at Ratcliffe, two were considered hit, three were considered non-hit, and one was considered code of conduct. Spring Garden, three investigations, and there was one incident of hit, one that was a non-hit, and one that was considered code of conduct violation. Four investigations at Washington, and all four were considered a hit incident. Six at Yantico in total, three were considered a hit, three were non, and there were no code of conduct incidents. Now, when there is an investigation, there's an incident that was considered hit, just because it was considered hit doesn't mean that was just one protective characteristic. It could impact, there could be multiple characteristics in one case. So at the elementary level, we had 11 cases that were confirmed as a hit, and this is the breakdown according to each school. So for example, you can see at Yantico, there were three cases, where you could see, in those three cases, several characteristics were violated. Where at the middle school?
Nine.
Nine. I believe that was one was considered a hit, four were non-hit, and say, three were considered code of conduct. I apologize if I can't see it that well. Where at the high school, I believe it was eight, were considered, eight investigations, seven hit, and one code, and one non-hit. Oh, perfect now. Okay, that's shuffled there. Oh, it's shuffled. And here are the breakdown according to the nine cases which were deemed as a hit.
Don't mind me.
So, in either of those investigations, these are the remedial measures that were implemented. Some could have been discipline. As I say all the time, there's never a cookie cutter approach to this. So some could have been, there was a loss of privilege, where someone wasn't allowed to go on a field trip, or maybe couldn't go outside for lunch. There was a lunch detention, or central, a school suspension, or a health school suspension. Support services through the school counseling, or special services department. Assignments vary, could be a class lesson, a project, apology letter, reflection assignments, or essay, a reading assignment that they had to provide, an essay, as well as any other miscellaneous interventions, conferences, things, schedule changes, monitoring by staff, verbal warnings, referrals to local providers, treatment providers, someone could attend a workshop, as well as contact the Mount Le Police Department. Different programs, there are many programs that we do throughout the district, but frequently, after every board meeting, there's a personnel report, I review it, see who are the new steps that need to be trained, meeting with the Anti-Bullying Specialist, a parent training. Last February, we conducted a cyber safety workshop by Tom Kersting, part of the Anti-Bullying Coordinator Association, online membership, where constantly providing feedback to one another, positive acknowledgements, positive accomplishments. I think it's a great thing to always provide encouragement, to reflect on the positive things, to build character, let the school district as well as the community know what our students are doing. For anyone who needs any information, I do have an HIV link on the district website. I believe it was March, April, we conducted affirmative action training, which touched upon racing color for the staff, so we're educating our staff as well. Different things we're doing in a classroom. We have elementary character education curriculum, the LEAD program that's implemented through the police department. Here at the middle school, we have advisory periods. At the high school level, athletic departments, community service projects. We also have a lunch and lunch program. Lessons are constantly infused into the curriculum. We have an ambassador's program, we have core ambassador's program, we have real raiders, peer-to-peer activities from K to 12, different clubs, assemblies, fundraisers, theme days that not just talk about respect, but they're also talking about building a sense of citizenship, and that's building character among our students. As we build character, we reduce the level, or incidence of hit. That is the main goal. Throughout the course of the year, I'm constantly providing statistics through the state, which was one of the big projects. Every year, at the end of July, what are the health incidents, what trainings we are conducting, as well as what programs are being implemented, that is required per the state. As you know, I'm here during the summer, providing information regarding our self-assessment. I'm still waiting for our grades from last school year, and as soon as we receive those grades, I will be posting them on the district website. Thank you.
So, you can hear this, and thank you, I know you did it really quickly going through this. I'm not sure that anybody really has an understanding of how much time it takes. You know, a hit comes to light, or there's an accusation, there's an investigation at the school level, there's the determination, as Mr. Capello detailed. After that, there's reports, there's the consequences, or the meetings with the parents, or the special services or counseling offices. Those reports are all given to the Board of Education. I don't know if you're aware of that, but they read all of the redacted reports each month. They're on the board agenda for first and second reading. Parents receive communications from the central office regarding the findings of these. There's opportunities to appeal, again, to the Board of Education, or even to the Department of Education. So, it's a long process and a tremendous amount of work, even though we tease Joe and make him go really quickly. The amount of time and effort that you put into it, leading this for the district, is tremendous, and don't think it goes under its thirty.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you again, Mr. Capello. I know the amount of time you do put in. One question, when they make reference to ancestry, just from my own Polish background, what would that reference to in a hit case? If you can say.
Someone's lineage. Could be even, I guess, similar to a nation of origin. Like I also give myself an example, I always, when I speak to the students about this, I use myself. My mother is Cuban, my father is Italian, and target me because, make an accusation of, oh, you're Italian, or you're an immigrant. All right? Something like that. An actual or perceived characteristic of someone.
Okay. And again, due respect to you, before your time, there was a judge in Mount Le, Judge Robert Sitrino, who used to treat the crime in reference to what was done wrong. Do we do that? If a student makes reference to someone's color, someone's ethnic background, do we then try to fit him into a class, or have the counselor speak to him about that particular?
Yes, there's an incident, there's always either some type of assignment, it could be a discipline, but it's always something educational. How are we going to educate the student? You know, I think historically, people always say, oh, it's always about helping the victim, but it's also about assisting the person who, if you want to call them the bully, the aggressor, help educate them as well, so they don't do it again. To hopefully, and that's why they call it remedial measures.
And if we do that, and we don't resolve it the first time around, then a month later...
Sometimes it could escalate, either the discipline or the remedial measures.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
How do you discern the difference between who gets lunch detention, in school, in home? What are the levels?
Just like Mr. Kuzinski said, sometimes it could be progressive discipline, based upon what actually occurred. You know, because dealing with a student who this could be, like you said, could be the second or third incident.
Is that part of the policy?
Progressive discipline is, is not just a policy, but it's a framework of action. We use progressive discipline with the students, we use progressive discipline with the staff.
Also too, part of the, part of, it's in our district policy, is to take into consideration what's the age of the student, you know? Is there a learning disability that we need to take into consideration? What occurred actually? Is this the first episode? Is the second? Is the third? Taking a look at everything as a whole, is, that's when we make a decision of what are the discipline or remedial measures.
Is that a team decision, or is it...
Yeah, it could be administration, right? The Anti-Bullying Specialist. It could also be part of whoever is part of the investigation as well. We have something called the School Climate, School Safety Team, right? That could be part of the investigation, even though that's not their main function, but sometimes, let's say if there's an investigation, and the student could be very apprehensive to speak, and we know that maybe they communicate, they feel comfortable with a staff member in the room, so maybe they call another staff member to assist that student. So it could be multiple people assisting the investigation. You know, sometimes to me, you have to interview multiple people.
There's also, you know, as Mr. Capello brought it here, sometimes it's an HIV, sometimes it's a non-event, sometimes it's a code of conduct violation. The code of conduct's pretty clear in how consequences progress along that discipline.
So would that be somebody at the central office?
No, no, that's the building leadership team, probably with the school council.
Okay. Ms. Blair?
So I do have a question, and I'll probably talk to Super about it later, but I've got this while I was traveling. So there was a violation occurs, and...
What type of violation? A hit incident?
It's either hit or code of conduct. Because they got, like, the lunch suspension, and then they were not supposed to be able to play a final game of a sport, let's say, okay? So, and the parents of the person that had the hit felt it wasn't strong enough in the first place.
The aggressor?
No, the other parents.
The victim?
The victim. All right. They didn't feel it was strong enough in the first place, so then they're at the game, and midway through the game, this student was put into the sport. And then they called me and said, listen, we weren't happy in the first place.
You've got to try and keep it general.
I'm trying to keep it, it's just a sport. Keep it general. Anyhow, I'm going to follow up on that, but who follows up to make sure whatever was issued is being complied?
So if the parent had an issue, you are to return them to the building leadership. That's what we do. In this particular case, the family had a meeting with building leadership and me.
No, I know they were.
But I'm saying, and that is all we can really discuss.
So, but it's still, no, I'm discussing the general, who follows it up is my question. I'm not worried about that case.
So beyond, beyond, right? You referring it back to administration in that situation, because they were asking to appeal, the first appeal is to me, and the next appeal is to the board, and you know we've had those appeal in close.
So that's still my way of bringing it up there. My answer is, if those parents were there, and they didn't know that occurred, the kid would have thought he got away with it.
We aren't allowed to speak about other children, and we aren't allowed to speak about...
I'm just saying, but who, my question is, who follows up to make sure whatever issues the punishment gets followed up? Without getting you per local.
But I cannot, can we talk about this offline? Because this is not an example.
Can we talk about the chain of command?
The chain of command is always...
The chain of command is, it starts off with the investigation. If there is discipline, and then just correct me if I'm wrong, or if you want to walk through it, right? I just wanted to...
So the investigation is initiated by the principal, which is then, the investigation is completed with the Anti-Bullying Specialist. The Anti-Bullying Specialist may ask other staff members to be part of it, usually could be, usually as an administrator, who's part of the investigation. They need all parties, any witnesses. They conduct the investigation, which needs to be done within 10 school days. Once the investigation is complete, then a report is submitted, they send the report to Dr. Glazer regarding any type of discipline, it would be the building administrator.
And then at that point though, from that control, if the parents don't agree, they have the opportunity to come back to the administration or the superintendent in a position.
It would then be part of the appeal process.
The appeal process. And then, and the continuation of the appeal process is superintendent, Board of Education, state.
State, depending upon characteristic, but also could be divisional civil rights as well.
Got it. Okay.
The discipline, is it specific to the district, or is it state?
Specific to the incident.
No, I know that, but you have...
So the district and it's...
So the district decides on the discipline.
Yes.
It's not something that's...
It's not even a district, it's the building.
So it's the building. So for building to building, we could have discipline that's different for the same type of action?
The principals do a lot of norm, we call it norming articulation, to try and keep it consistent, but again, as Mr. Capello said, you have to consider the student, then if it's the first time, the third time.
I understand, but let's just say it's the same incident that happened to two schools, different students, you know, is the discipline going to be the same, or could the discipline be different because it's two different buildings? Two different teams?
It could, it could be different, but I mean, there's so many different variables. And there's so many variables that could make it different. You know, like I always say, there's a linger, that there's never one, because it's always a pretty...
Well, one of the, one of the hit, you know, is race. So let's say there's an issue of a race at two different buildings. Right? Could the discipline be different?
Possibly based upon what's serious history?
Well, what they did with race, there's...
It could be age, it could be grade, if somebody got...
I think more specific, if the incident is identical, same age, same situation, same... Nothing's different, except the schools. Would Ratcliffe give the same discipline as Lincoln?
Could be different.
Why?
Yeah, why?
Something we would have to discuss on the administration.
There's no identical student or situation, and there's no identical incident, right? When you say race, there's a broad spectrum of what that could be.
I understand, but what you're saying is the same...
If they were identical?
If they're identical.
Then I would...
You're going to have, and I was going to say similar, only in that depending on the child, you might have other kinds of counseling remediations. You might have not the discipline. They're really hard not to always just have discipline. There's also the other components that Mr. Capello pointed out, the reflection, the assignment, the additional learning or education around it.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
But that's where it could be different.
But I'm just, what I'm concerned about is that, you know, student at Washington School is in a situation and gets detention, or gets suspended, and a student at Lincoln School for the same identifiable type of situation doesn't get that, gets some other type of discipline. Because it's two different people that are doing the, you know, that are looking at the case, it's two different administrations, you know, two different principals.
The principals, the principals do what I said, they do meet regularly, they speak regularly, they're trained by Mr. Capello on a regular basis. They can't tell you that it would be an identical thing, because the kids are different, but it would be similar, school to school. Elementary, again, it's going to look different at the middle school, it's going to look different at the high school.
That's my concern, that we're being consistent.
I think Mr. Capello works really hard to be consistent.
And we may be, in our year, in September, late September, early October, when things start to slow down, transition to the school year, we meet as an administrative team to go over our policy and divisions to our, despite we had in, in July, had our divisions to our policy, and go over the policy, and discuss different things that may come up during the school year, to work on becoming consistent.
And then there's a question, even I still have, I mean, even sometimes when I get the report after the determination, I'll call Mr. Capello and say, hey, is this what this should be, is this what this should be? I mean, we literally look at it at four different levels during the course of the investigation before it's final.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Capello. See you next time.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, yes, next up is Mr. Vintsey. We are doing the comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. We had completed last year's 18, 19 school audit, and we provided the administration with two reports. One is the comprehensive annual financial report, and the second report is a management report, which includes our audit findings. Just touching on the financial condition of the district, you know, again, the district finished the 18, 19 year with excellent reserves and surplus. Just to touch on a couple of the account balances, your total reserves and surplus were 7.8 million, which was about 500,000 less than the prior year. Capital reserve, you still have a balance of 2.3 million. Maintenance reserve, 515,000. You have nearly 1.7 million set aside for tax relief, we call it excess surplus. If you remember many years ago, the state limits how much surplus a district is allowed to have, and that's calculated on an annual basis based on your spending pattern. So there is money set aside for that. 1.2 million has been set aside for the purchase of the TCU's, the temporary classroom units, and what's left is what we call unassigned, which is $2 million, and that's actually the maximum you're allowed to have based on this excess surplus calculation. Capital reserve did go down. If you went back a year prior, you had just over 4 million. Keep in mind though, in 18, 19, you did withdraw 1.9 million. Most of that was for the TCU's. So financially, the district is still in very good shape. From our audit findings, we did have, I think, four or five recommendations. Most of them were minor insignificant, nothing that I would alarm, you know, question to be alarmed about. I think Karen has completed her corrective action plan for tonight, and the corrective action plan will address the findings that we did include in the report. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Good job, as usual.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Then credit goes to Karen Hurst.
Could you just touch on the food service account? That's important to bring up, where the food service account ended up last year.
Right, so last year, when we met with the administration and finance committee, we did touch on the fact that the cafeteria operations did have a deficit, and obviously that is something that needs to be monitored going forward. Overall, you have surplus, but last year's operation had almost $150,000 lost. So in a case like that, right now, the income that you're generating from the students, from alibi sales, from state and federal sources, is not covering all the expenses. I caution you, because maybe at a point down the road, the board may need to include a budget appropriation to subsidize the food service operations, unless you monitor that this year, and you see that the operations are turning around, and it does become profitable.
Thank you. So you were here when we had a staff that was responsible to us before we privatized it? So we, so you were here when we had a staff that was responsible to us before we privatized it? And one of the reasons that we privatized it, as you recall, is we were losing almost three hundred thousand dollars a year back then, which was probably, I don't know what, six years ago, maybe, maybe seven years ago? Where do we go from making money to losing that hundred and fifty thousand dollars? What was the direct?
The question is whether participation is there? I don't know, I think you have a new company now.
Right.
We're designing right after you.
Okay, but obviously, I think-
I think we're actually the first company to do it before they have to be privatized, is that correct?
No.
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 I thought we were going to Pomtonian initially, we were bringing it initially.
Chartwell's, I believe.
So we were going to Pomtonian.
Pomtonian was, or we were here in Tom, and then Chartwell's.
So they were, they were here before we came back.
Yeah.
Right. So, so we, we turned that around from losses to gains. Where did the losses begin here? Because I just got that.
Well, I don't know enough of the statistics to find out if the participation from the students is down, whether they're, if you have open periods where the students are allowed to leave the schools for their own lunch. So there's a lot of variables that go into that.
Do you have an answer on that, Karen?
So the last, the last year of the contract we have with the Chartwells, there was no initiative to try and turn sales around from all part of the company. There was a drop-off in sales when we went to the block scheduling. And it's always been a challenge at the high school having an open campus, but the block scheduling did have an effect upon the overall sales.
Do you think that's a direct impact to that loss?
So that's, that's attributed to the loss, but it's also-
Is that the majority of the high school, what about the elementary schools and middle school?
Participation at the elementary level was probably pretty standard, and here at the middle school, they don't have, they're in, they have to have lunch at the side. So that always tends to help the profits. We also lost a contract with an outside school that we provided meals to last year. But a lot of it had to do with just the overall operational side and not doing, taking any initiatives to increase sales.
Maybe that's something that the finance committee could look at, trying to figure out what we need to do again.
I think you're gonna get to hear a little bit next.
I'm sorry?
I think you're gonna get to hear a little bit next.
Excellent, good words. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you.
That's above and over retirement.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
All right, so next up, we have Pomtonian.
Time means everything.
This is President Mark Bitter.
Thank you, and I have with me Gina Mafucci, she's my operations manager that's serving Nutley community and working with us for a long time. I want to start by thanking the board for giving us the opportunity to serve your students this year, we're having a great time. The early feedback that we're hearing from the students and from the building administrators is that they're very pleased with the service. Some of the things that we did initially when we came in is we worked on improving the quality of the food that we're offering to the students. Some examples of that, we are using whole muscle chicken instead of highly processed chicken, we're using boar's head cold cuts. So I'm gonna have Gina pass out just some menus and some explanation of stuff. Also improved the presentation of the food, our dining experience starts with our eyes, and the students are enjoying the different items that we're putting out. We also introduced our farm stand concept, which offers a wide variety of fresh fruits and vegetables each day that come with all the meals. And we're seeing more students making vegetable choices and eating a full, complete meal. We're also featuring local produce with the signs next to the produce telling us where the, what farms we're featuring. We also make that fruits and vegetables available to students unlimited, as much fruits and vegetables as they want. We expanded the amount of variety that we're offering the students, say in your high school and middle school, there's at least nine, ten choices available each day, so there's a wide selection. At the elementary schools, we have more choices. Some of them include like a bento box, which has been very popular. One of those is that build your own pizza concept in there. We also increased the number of vegetarian choices. Another exciting thing that we've done already is eliminated the need for parents to preorder at the elementary level. This gives the parents the maximum flexibility, they can choose any day when they want to participate, they don't have to choose a month in advance. So even if they intended to feed their child and their teenager, eat all the cold cuts out of the refrigerator, they can send them in and we'll have lunch ready for them. It also speeds up the service to the students, it eliminated a lot of useless paperwork. And we have this, we'll have all the schools with no preorder by December first. So we're, we're rolling it out one at a time. We've also been doing exciting promotional events, the students are dining in the same place a hundred days a year, so we're trying to do different things to make it interesting. We've had sushi days and waffle days. We'll also be meeting with students to get their feedback, we've gone through two months of menus now, we want to see, we keep production records, so we see what's popular and what isn't, and we can make alterations. We also want to hear from them, what they like about the menu and what things that they'd like to see on the menu. We also introduced nutritionally analyzed menus for the elementary parents that can go on and see the nutritional breakdown. And it also has great benefits to the district's nurses when they're dealing with students with diabetes and S car counts and things like that. So the result of these initiatives have been impressive, the sales, year to date are up over thirty percent at the high school, thirty-five percent at the middle school, thirty-six percent at the elementary school. Federal and state reimbursement was up a year to date fifteen percent, and the trend is still upwards. We have a lot of students that were inhabited brown bagging, and we're waiting in the back and waiting for the cooler weather. The block lunch is particularly challenging. Pomtonian does run single unit lunches in, I think, over forty high schools. Nutley is fairly unique also with the open campus and a ton of restaurants in town. So it is a particular challenge, but thirty percent growth is impressive, and then maybe some inclement weather will get them to come in and try some of the new offerings that are there. And as I said, the trend is up, so the month of October was up forty percent, sales were up forty percent, and reimbursement's up twenty percent. And the good news is that the cafeteria's running a surplus, that we're in the black and running a surplus. And that's kind of my overview of what's going on in five minutes or less. Any, I don't know if there's any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Vintsey?
And I'm not, I'm not one to rant stand and try to put some money on the spot, that's not what I do. And I've spoken to the superintendent about it, I've spoken to Gina about it also. Particularly, I have emails in front of me from parents that I, you would be embarrassed if I read them publicly, on the food condition at some of the schools. I spoke to Gina and the superintendent, not in that order.
That's why they're here tonight.
I'm sorry?
We met too, and that's why they're here.
And it's, you know, I, I hope what we've talked about has been correct, and I haven't seen it yet, I mean, I haven't heard that it's gotten so much better. We had a school that ended up, I think, with nothing but tuna fish salad that particular day, or that particular week, whatever it was, no, no other choice.
We actually had a incident, and the only thing that I know when I spoke to Dr. Glazer and Ms. Mayment about it, was at Yanacost School, and that week, as an alternate for a cold sandwich, was a turkey sandwich or a turkey wrap. And we had, the last couple of students that came through the lunch, and we had the container that was carrying the nachos fell over. And our employee made a very bad choice and didn't call us to bring five or six or ten extra meals. That day, the student was offered a turkey sandwich, a salad, or a bagel bag. This is the only incident that was brought to my attention in Nutley, that the child did not get what they want. I have personally been in the school district, working, running to schools, to Lincoln, to Washington, delivering meals. And I know that the principals of the school have seen me when our employees call up, because I don't want to rely on the driver to get back to pick up the lunches, so I will jump in my car. Jesse, who is the food service director, he'll jump in his car. So I am, and I do apologize to the people who, you know, are believing that they didn't get what they were supposed to get. I also do know, and I talked to Dr. Glazer and to Ms. Mayment, in regards to, we are purchasing nothing but whole muscle chicken products. We are serving boar's head. I do not purchase anything from the government other than vegetables, canned fruit, some canned corn and different things like that. We are getting DOD, we are not purchasing any commodities, we are not giving the students any commodities. So it's, I believe, a perception thing, that the people in the district are thinking that we are giving them processed stuff. I told both of them that we, they can come into the kitchen. I actually brought samples of what I'm sending to the teachers and what I'm sending to the students, to the board office, so they know that I'm serving nothing but whole muscle chicken products. We are actually purchasing like real chicken and grilling it in our ovens and serving it to the students if they want a grilled chicken Caesar salad. If the teachers wanted a grilled chicken Caesar salad or Mediterranean salad along with chicken on it. So I really think it's a perception thing, I don't know how else to get it out to them that we are only serving these products.
Can I add something, first you've seen the email that I, that I think I should have, Dr. Glazer, I think I should, you know, with you in the next round.
No, I don't have one.
Most of this goes in the trash, the food is disgusting, it's pre-made government food, I think that's an assumption, I don't think that that's really what is happening.
And so, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but one of the things, after you said that, I also went to look, we, we had a conversation about this, and, and that's where I learned about the farm stand. I think that that wasn't really communicated well, and I know at Lincoln School in particular, there wasn't an understanding that there was unlimited fruits and vegetables and lots of choice of fruits and vegetables. I don't know if you want to share more about that farm stand?
Yeah, well, when, when we started the first venue, we sent out a mailing campaign, I'm sure the parents are inundated at the beginning of the year, but we explained the different concepts, and then I think we also participated in the back to school nights, to, did we do that?
No, we just want school, just in Lincoln School.
Yeah, so it, it is a challenge to get the word out to the parents, it is also available on our website, when they go look up the menu, it explains the different concepts, but yeah, it's always something that needs to be reinforced because in the lunchroom, if we're doing our job right, the student's with us about ten seconds. So we really need the parent to be aware of what's going on in the program so that at, at the dinner table, they can coach their child and remind them to take all the components that come with the meal each day, because we want them to eat a balanced meal.
Can you just share some of that, you gave me a whole litany of what was on the farm stands.
Yes, on our farm stand, we have a rainbow of colors, we have broccoli, we have salads, we have bagged apples, we have bagged carrots.
There may be a picture.
It's the back page.
I've gone to lunch a couple times in this, this big time, this baby, but now that I've done this, this is the stuff I'm gonna get to lunch.
Just so everybody is aware, yes, on the back page, this is a farm stand that we do have, but not in our elementary schools. We take everything that's here and we cup it in a four ounce cup.
Because it's a satellite.
Exactly. We don't have the room in some of the schools, so everything is cupped up and put in baskets. So when the students do come through the line, they will take their farm stand, their milk, then they will go and take the center of the plate, whichever they may choose, whether it's a bagel bag, the hot meal of the day, a salad, and then they would come to the register. But all of this is cupped up for the students to take, in order for us to claim the meal that day.
We've also added a staff ordering meal option, staff's able to order the meals and salads. I know in the business office, I do it by like nine o'clock something, but those have been terrific. I've had the salads a couple times, and they are no different than I would get from a restaurant.
Um, I'm sorry, I can hear my children, Karen, I talked to Dr. Glazer on maybe sending a letter to parents about this farm stand and some information about healthy eating options. Maybe as we approach the new year, people are really focused on health and wellness, we talked that maybe parents weren't aware, were not aware that the farm stand was available to their, to their children, and again, it might be that dinner conversation that grass by law.
And I think it's a great idea, especially if we can email the parents each month when the menu's coming out, so we can highlight anything new that's going on in the menu. We don't have access to the email, so we'd have to, you know, work with-
That's one of the questions I was gonna ask, were you sending out information that provides you the lunch?
We do.
Nancy, I'm cutting hand in the business office, I think that brings, sets out the information.
So that goes out, the menu goes out to your parents?
Yes. And it's always on the website.
I know it's on the website, but that's, you know, sometimes people are busy that day, they don't have time to go look for it.
And I have to say, I've noticed that the different PTOs have also been posting it on websites and Facebook page, which I think has been also a real positive. You mentioned Yanacost School as the school where the unfortunate nacho incident happened. But since then, they've posted it over and over.
Let me just back up, you're saying that it's sent out to every parent?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a parent, Frank's a parent.
I'm a grandparent, I don't get it, my daughter doesn't get it, my daughter doesn't get it.
She sends it out on the website.
Okay, so we're not sending it out.
It's sent to the elementary schools, so they can send it out.
Yeah, but maybe we should send them out, maybe we should send that information out.
The buildings are sending, that's what, we're sending the buildings.
We can reinforce that you're doing.
Are you just saying, the building's sending it out to the parents though? Or is it just put out to like PTO? I think that's what we need some clarity on, is what happens once it gets to the building. And maybe one of the things is that we just drive it and send it out and see if that makes sense.
Maybe we should look into that to see if-
Just have a look.
No, I just want to say on a positive note, the two PTO meetings that I was at, at Washington School in Spring Garden, the parents were very complimentary. They really enjoyed the fresh food and the different choices that the kids have, and they've said that their students are excited to go to lunch, and they love the farm stand. And I think Washington was the pilot for the, you know, they don't have to preorder. So my, the principal there said that it actually sped up the lunch process. And a couple times where they did, you know, run out, those past couple, he said, the child's only had to wait for like five minutes, and some other meal was brought over to replace it. So like you were saying, from school to school transfers, that did indicate a lot of-
Yeah, that was one of the fears about starting the first year, because we didn't have a tremendous amount of history. Plus the sales are growing each day, so if we use September's participation numbers on a preorder system, that might not be accurate because the sales continue to grow, and then also the flexibility. So parents that may not have participated because of the restrictive ordering, where you had to decide towards the end of September what you were gonna buy for the whole month of October. So we're working out, we're saying, trying to get the forecasting right and increase those quantities, fortunately.
I think some of the parents were a little tenuous on having their children order their own food because they weren't in control like they used to be, knowing that your child is gonna have, you know, whatever, you know, tacos or chicken parmesan or bagel bites or whatever. But the parents in Washington said that it's actually working out very well.
Yeah, everyone's always nervous about change, we said, that's something that we're always combating, but also getting the word out and advertising, if we sent a notice to parents about how the farm stand works in September, probably only a small percentage would remember having ever seen it. It's probably that constant reinforcement, the communication that went out in the elementaries was mostly about the eliminating preorder and explaining that. So that was kind of a lengthy explanation that they don't have to preorder. But if we can work with the principals, we came to a principals' meeting and talked about our plans, maybe work with them on improving communication, get the word out what's there, and also encouraging them to write to us with suggestions on what would make the program even better.
What is the process for dietary pizzas? As far as how much, how many slices the kids get, how you make sure you have enough?
It's all done by dietary guidelines, and they have to fill out paperwork and let us know that they're spending like the proper amount of cheese on the pizza, the proper amount of sauce.
No, how many slices?
Oh, how many slices? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's one slice, I thought you wanted to know, okay.
Yeah, the national, almost everything we do in our menu design is regulated by the National School Lunch Program, so it's how much protein we provide, maximum number of calories, and maximum number of fat, saturated fat. So there's a whole bunch of regulations, so the meal comes in one slice of pizza, but I think we make it available now to buy à la carte also. So that would be an à la carte purchase if they wanted to buy a second slice.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for being so responsive. I just wanted to say, you know, you sent us the one text and the email. They were here meeting with us the day after, literally the day after. We were in the schools the following day and I feel really confident that Mr. Bucci's being super responsive and doing everything possible to keep the quality high.
Thank you.
Wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving and wishing our parents a wonderful retirement.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight.
All right, our last presentation of the evening.
But not least.
Our risk assessment procedure with Meredith Kirkins and April Vidella.
And I just want to say that Ms. Kirkins and Ms. Vidella worked so hard on this risk assessment procedure. One of the things that we've seen as a district, that we've seen as a community, that we've talked about as a nation, is the incredible upswing in the amount of mental health incidents, the number of risk assessments that we're sending students out for, not just at the high school, the middle school, the elementary school. There is a tremendous need to look at this process. And I have to say, Meredith, you've been in the role what, just about a year?
Since, yeah.
Just about, not quite. And in the space of that time, the amount of work that you've put in and working with April on this, it's just terrific. And I'm really pleased that we've gotten to a place where we can have Dr. Riley talking about our 504 procedures as a district, as a comprehensive program, and that we can have you here tonight talking about the risk assessment procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. So good evening. I'm April Vidella, I'm the supervisor of special services.
And I'm Meredith Kirkins, I'm the coordinator of school counseling. So this summer, together and with the support of our district administrative team and Board of Education, we work to evaluate and update our district policy and regulation entitled Student Suicide Prevention, which delineates the responsibilities of all involved parties when a student is identified as possibly being at risk of danger to themselves or others.
And this evaluation and revision process was undertaken to help support our district goal for health and wellness.
The result of our actions is a comprehensive and thorough procedure for how staff can best support students during a crisis situation, as well as linking the family with support services, community resources, and initiating plans for follow-up care with the student and family.
So initially, we assessed our current procedures as well as the needs of our students. We reached out to mental health professionals in the field regarding best practices on the clinical side, and we also consulted with legal counsel to ensure that we were meeting all of the administrative code guidelines. For example, one of the changes is that we now have, following clearance by a mental health professional, licensed mental health professional, there is a reentry meeting for every student that is sent out on a risk assessment with the school crisis team, and there is a written reentry plan to help further support that student.
April and I then trained our district administrative team on the updated policy, as well as the procedure and all the updated forms at our administrative retreat days in August, and again in an administrative meeting in September. Our district anti-bullying specialist, Mr. Capello, also trained the district admin team on suicide warning signs. Information on the suicide warning signs and what to look for was disseminated to all parents in Nutley and counselors at every grade level, K through 12, our training students in development to live for great ways.
And then at the onset of the school year, Meredith and I trained our respective departments, which includes the staff counselors, the school counselors, and the child study team regarding the revisions to the policies and procedures. We also talked to them about the school crisis team and what their roles and responsibilities would be on that team as well. And then we continue to consistently collaborate with the clinical staff that are involved in conducting these assessments, as well as with the administration staff to see how's it going, how are the changes going, and obtain feedback regarding the process.
We are also working with our community partners on our referral process, working to make the transitions between our school and the community mental health professionals as easy as possible to navigate for our families. By enhancing our communication and collaborating together on case management, we're able to implement the best possible treatment plans for our students.
And the results thus far is a comprehensive understanding and procedure to help students in need. Meredith and I both really enjoy, this is an area of passion for us, we're committed to helping students with their overall social emotional well-being, and we do look forward to further collaborating in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have done a terrific job. It really is a lovely feeling to have your daily job description is and it's made a terrific difference, K to 12, for all of us in understanding it better. And I would say for board members that got to hear the early policy discussions, it was really informative. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a guess. I shared very much.
My question is, when you talk about ongoing and long-term monitoring, when a student comes back, okay, they've been identified, we know what the problem is, in terms of ongoing, what are we talking about? Are we talking about weekly, like do we touch base? Who does the touch base?
So students who come from a different, first of all, where they're hospitalized.
Right.
Did they just go to PHP or IOP? Were they just released with outpatient recommendations to go to weekly counseling? So it depends on, you know, how high of a level of risk they were. So each student gets an individualized reentry plan at their reentry meeting, which is made in collaboration with the school crisis team, administration, myself and April, with whatever, whoever did the assessment, whatever clinician did the assessment, to determine that. So we not only help monitor that the student is continuing their plan of external treatment, but we also meet with them in school. So it depends on the need. It depends on the need. It could range. It could range. And it's always also as needed. So the student and the parent sign that they will seek services as needed and then we proactively provide services. It just depends on the case, how frequently. But they're always monitored, tracked. If we have a student that's at risk, we make sure that we follow up with them. We're very proactive.
So if you have a child who's at risk there and say they come down to see you or you, you're not there, you're at a meeting, who's the next person in line to work with?
That's a good question. So usually, they're coming down to talk to their counselor, their needs manager, someone that they already have a relationship with, most of the time. I think sometimes things will organically come up in a conversation in the classroom, which is why then you do have a support staff for them to go and talk to. The building administration is made aware, the clinical staff members conduct the assessment, and then as a team, that's why it's a school crisis team, it's not one person acting alone, it's a collaborative conversation. We reach out to the parents, we get them to the next step. One of the things that we're also really trying to do is provide connections within the community. We have Nutley Family Service Bureau, we have Mountainside that we're working with. So local, community-based agencies that can also provide support, as well as our staff members. You know, we are, we do have like limits to the school day, so you know, we want to provide an ongoing support, but we also want to make sure that that support doesn't stop in the school. So we're really trying to foster those relationships as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So a question, one question is district-wide?
Yes. That was one of our things. We wanted to be consistent, every school followed the same procedure, same forms. So that's one thing we really tried to...
And number two is I want to thank you for putting this together for our students here in the district. I mean, a couple more comments you just made really shows what you've done on the program and I just want to thank you for all the work you do to protect our students here.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks for staying in the...
Of course, of course, not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna go over to our reports now. We're gonna start off with the superintendent's report, back to Julie later.
So thank you, not just to my administrative team and the teachers that are here tonight, but for everybody who came out on the Monday night before Thanksgiving. I wanted to say Nutley is, and I say this often, a special place in neighbors. They come together, they honor what's important. It's often the people here in the community, there's a lot of shared moments in our lives. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, we have a lot to be grateful for, and I'm gonna shout out a few of them since our last board meeting. Our art students who were awarded the best school display at the Essex County Parks and Gardens Glow Contest for their pumpkin carvings. We were able to reopen the Nutley High School auditorium at the beginning of November. The restoration of that space would not have been possible without the effort and support of Friends of Nutley singers, the Nutley Music Boosters Association, Mr. James Gardner, Mr. Henry Niola, Dr. Riley, our own Mr. Perigi, among many, many others. And it looks beautiful. If you've been in the space, you know, it took a really long time, but it was, it was worth it in the end. The first event the district held was the Veterans Day Ceremony hosted by the Patriot Club under the direction of J.D. Vick. This year was yet another wonderful and moving celebration for the whole community. And then Mr. Vick was at it again last weekend with the football team, raking leaves for Nutley senior citizens. Truly a model of service above self. I have to give a special shout out to Eileen Painter and the Nutley Family Service Bureau. I guess that's the second shout out for them tonight. And the Knights of Columbus for hosting the post-veterans ceremony dinner. It was a full house. They were still taking out tables and chairs, an hour into the dinner and well into the dessert. So couldn't ask for a better showing for our community in celebrating our current and past veterans. The community also came out in force to support our history teacher and football coach, Steve Di Gregorio, as he continues in his fight against cancer. I will say, and I think a lot of us were there that night, it was a really special night. I think all the goodwill and the healing energy filled the space, and as he said, fight faith in family. So we'll continue to support that and continue to send all of our best hope for healing. Our culinary students with our teachers and chefs, Tric Huggins and Don Gialdo, once again led an amazing charge with amazing catering at the Nutley Hall of Fame Celebration, Sunday the 15th, and the annual Chamber of Commerce Thanksgiving Lunch. I will say, I was fortunate enough to eat at both of them. Truly a shining example of how we grind career and technical education. Those students are ready to be chefs. Joe, who led the Chamber of Commerce luncheon and presented the menu, just knocked my socks off. And I will also say that it was the best gluten-free corporate and cranberry sauce I've had anywhere to cover. Our marching band won first place in several caption awards at the U.S. Band's New Jersey Group Final. That's our state championship in Somerville. They also came in second place and won caption awards at the national finals in Allenstown, Pennsylvania. It's been a really special season under the direction of Mr. Vicarello, and I'm excited to tell you that we'll be celebrating all of them, all 93 students who participated at the December 16th Board of Education meeting. Needless to say, we'll be back in the auditorium. These were not the only celebrations we had though. We were also able to honor our own Karen Yeens as she prepares to enter retirement. Tonight, as you've heard from a couple of vendors, who I guess are now friends, tonight is her last Board of Education meeting as business administrator and board secretary. Today was our last day working together in the office, but tonight, I think I'd rather celebrate our firsts. Karen was the first person I saw when I came in for my very first interview, was the first, and that night, I think the only smile in the room, although it's certainly been the first of many, and the first of many coworkers to become a true friend. I want to read an excerpt from my speech from the night of her retirement party. I think it still captures my feelings. And I hope for those of you that weren't able to be there, it captures something for you about Karen as well. Those of you who know me, know that I am enamored of photography. Life is like a camera, you focus on what's important, and from the first day I met Karen, she's helped me stay focused on the big picture, blur the background, capture the good times and special moments, and I can say we've laughed a lot and shared plenty. You need to develop from the negatives, and Karen, thank you for always giving me perspective there. A wide angler close-up from you was always the perfect balance to whatever negative might develop. And finally, we always have to be willing to take another shot. God knows, we've taken a lot of shots. As you turn the page in your scrapbook, we all wish you many more good times and special moments, tremendous joy in the knowledge that you're part of some wonderful memories with each of us. Thank you for your hard work, for mentoring many of us, for your kindness, for all your smiles. I'll miss working with you, I'll miss your warmth and the time to further grow our friendship. You're gonna be missed by all of us. I wish you, and of course, Joe, Karen's husband, the very best of good health, happiness, and love as you begin your next chapter. Safe travels to Florida. Here's to, I have no drink, but here's to a happy, relaxing retirement, and to Karen and Joe, live your best life. Don't forget to send us pictures of your first days of the rest of your life. Love you. Thank you.
All right, so what's happening now? We're gonna go around the table, if anybody wants to make a couple remarks. It's happening now.
What's happening?
Karen may have gotten the best words out of me the night of her retirement party. But I will say, and parts of what I said even that night, you know, coming onto the Board of Education six years ago was certainly overwhelming, is probably the best word that I can describe, between dealing with the budget that we're dealing with today and we got a plan for the next budget next year and, you know, Karen was great, was always telling us, we have no money, we absolutely have no money. It was always no, it was always like, we don't have any, we don't have any, we don't have nothing, so you just can't have any. But what I will say is, is that she's always kept her eye on the mark to make sure that the district was always available to be able to sustain the ongoing costs year to year. We've had many, many difficult conversations, some very, very tough meetings, but the outcome of all of that was one thing, one thing only, is to make sure that our students of Nutley were always in a place to get the best that we can get and try to make it as affordable as possible for our taxpayers and make sure that we deliver education and not be in a situation where we owed more than we planned for. And I can thank you for the last six years of being wonderful at that part. We all heard our auditors today talk about the budget from last year and the order results were, you know, very positive. That's Karen Yeens, right? That's the head of making sure that we schedule things appropriately, we put money where it needs to be appropriately, we have the tough conversations, and together we come as a team to make sure we deliver the best that we can do, and I thank you for that. Enjoy your retirement, enjoy your time in Florida, the rest of us will be jealous, certainly from September to somewhere around April, and definitely keep in touch. It is a friendship that I can appreciate and I'm thankful for all the work that you've done here. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Kuzin, well. And I certainly appreciate the work that you've done for us, Karen. Me personally, as you know, I'm not a numbers person, so I would always go through you looking for the numbers, different than Mr. Farrell, who is a numbers person. But I appreciate your input. I know you take a lot of blame for not having the money there, but that's your job. Your job is to watch our money, and you've done a great job at that. You've been a big help to me through the negotiations process. Even though we butt it heads sometimes, it's always good, it's healthy, and I'm going to mission, I know you'll enjoy your retirement.
Mr. Scleran.
No, I mean, you have to repeat some of the same things, all right? I mean, the budget's been the biggest issue, and everybody does, right? With Karen, there's just not a lot of money there, and she would say, we have to cut here, we have to cut here, and there's no money for that, right? But that was her job, and she did a great job at it. I think then we went to the zero budgeting recently, and she really went for a year, messed on the first one, finding things, fixing it for us, coming up with some money, had to do the trailers. I'm sorry.
She's very emotional.
But Karen, truly, you've done a great job the whole time you're here. I don't even remember the years, because it goes back to the construction days when I first met you. So it goes back a long time, but I hope you have a great retirement, enjoy it with your husband. And I just didn't know she was going to Florida until everybody just said she's going to Florida. So have a great time and hopefully someday I'll wind up down there with you.
One day. Maybe not one day, next week.
It's been a pleasure working with you for the past year. I wish you a lot of luck. We worked very closely with the budget stuff last year, every week for the... I wish you nothing but happiness and very jealousy.
And just a reminder, Erica wants to know if we're having an in-house budget discussion.
We are.
Do you experience with that? Could you go another round?
She better be on it again. She was great. She was great. Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement, Karen. Really take this time for yourself. Enjoy it. Thank you.
When I became president a few years back, one of the first things I heard when we reorganized in January that year was, we have a $3.2 million budget shortfall. And for those of you who don't know how impossible that is to absorb, and I also want to give a shout out to the union because our union leadership helped us solve that, a big part of that problem. But Karen was the real reason why we came up with closing that gap without impacting staff and students. So thank you for that, and enjoy your retirement. I appreciate it. I always want to say South West. I always want to say South West.
I'll go. We may not have seen eye to eye the whole way through my career here. And I mean from the park's point of view. But I do want to say thank you for everything you've done. I know we're being left in a better place, and that is because of you. And I just want to say thank you and enjoy Florida.
Enjoy Florida. Lisa.
Congratulations on your retirement. I've enjoyed working with you for the past eight and a half years since I came on. Yep, everybody here. Thank you for your dedication and all your hard work. I don't know how we're going to replace you. I just wish you the best and I'm going to miss working.
It's you.
Well, Karen, you and I have, we've, there's been times where we haven't seen eye to eye, but it's always been, I've always known that you respected my opinion, and I've always respected your opinion. And I know you've always done what's best for the district and what's best for our kids. And that's important, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for your friendship because we, you know, we've always, I think we've always respected each other. I've never been on any other committee except finance. And, you know, our budget is in a place where it's sustainable. Well, that's important because you've always had, you've always had that in mind, that in order to do a budget, it has to be a budget that can be sustainable. And for those that are not involved in that, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and I know that, and I appreciate all your effort. As I said, I appreciate your friendship because it was never personal. There was always sometimes a difference of opinion, a difference of philosophy. I want to wish you nothing but the best to you and your husband in Florida. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy your kids, your grandkids, and I hope you do come back to visit us from time to time. Thank you.
Anyone else on the matter? Mr. Porigi. Ava.
Ava.
I wish you the best of luck. I hope you're enjoying your promo.
I do.
All right, so now Karen gets to take over here with her board report. I hope you save all the bad news for tonight.
Most of it was already covered by Mr. Vincy in the audit, but the audit doesn't get done by one person, and it's not something that just happens once a year. The entire business office staff works constantly looking through the lens of the audit. Each and every decision that they make every day, they're always cognizant of how it's going to impact the finances of the district and what the outcome is going to be of the audit. So I appreciate all of their efforts. They are a wonderful group of people. They're extremely dedicated, and we will miss each other a lot, and I know that. The facilities piece, I'm going to leave to Mr. Porigi because I believe he has a great report for tonight. We've been working on the final reports for the IDEA and ESA, and tonight the board is approving the carryovers for those grants. And we've been working with Mr. Bania and Ms. Snichow. We will be entering that information tomorrow and amending those reports with the state so we can begin using the carryover funds. Also on tonight's agenda is the appointment of Solutions Architect to be the Architect of Record for the Oval Project, which will be taking place this coming summer. So the board will be working very closely with them, Mr. Porigi, Dr. Glazer, Mr. Fireh on replacing the turf as well as some upgrades that need to be added to that field. I thought I could get to you a little easier. I'm not going to have.
Just accept that you're not, and you're going to feel better about it.
Thank you all for all of your kind words. It is a job that requires the efforts of a lot of people. And I have been very fortunate to work with an amazing group of people here in Nutley. Not just the business office staff, but the entire administrative team, as well as our teaching staff and all the support staff. Everyone comes to work here every single day with one thing in mind, and that's to do what is right to the students. And I know that you will continue to do things with that as being your power mot leader. And that is what has made, what has made Nutley successful and what will continue to drive and make all the best decisions. And all of your decisions continue to be based upon what is right for the students of this district. I'm proud of the accomplishments that have happened over the last 10 years. We've made a lot of positive changes and have impacted students in that way. And I know that that will continue under the leadership of each and every single one of you. Thank you for your friendship, for your respect, for your hard work and dedication. I know what goes into being a Board of Education member. My husband served as one for four years, and I would not only just go through our agenda, but I would help him with his, and preparing for his needs. It's a lot of time and effort that each and every one of you put into being here, and you do it selflessly, and you're here for the right reasons. And that helps to make my, helped to make my job easier. Again, thank you. I will miss you all, and I wish you the very best and a happy and wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Yeannis. Okay, we're moving this over to our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Porigi.
Doctor President. On November 5th, Tim Costner and I met with the Karen Moreno at the Park Oval to go over the turf replacement and our work list. On November 6th, Tim Costner and I have the Solutions Architect firm to go over the same process. And Karen mentioned that Solutions is going to be our architect of choice. All snow equipment and vehicles have been inspected and serviced, are ready to go. The grounds crew in the process of picking up leaves and will continue for the next several weeks. Chantel has all the boilers and heating equipment online. We continue to make sure any heating issues are a priority. We have an estimate to replace a four-inch cast iron sewer line at Washington Elementary School. The 130-foot line is old and causes several backups a year. We'll have two calls for the next meeting for that process. The NICO PTO has donated money to install two new backboards and new wall painting. That is in the process. That should be installed hopefully over the Christmas break. That's, of course, up to the vendors. Friday night, we helped, worked with the Spring Garden staff installing a new sensory path in the basement hallway. Friday and Saturday night, the custodians waxed over the pathway, and another quote on Sunday afternoon, and I saw it this morning, it looks really nice. The teachers are very happy with it. The teachers actually installed it, and we just waxed over it, so it came out beautiful. If you have the time, go look at it. It's in the basement at Spring Garden. It's pretty cool. Staffing, we have three new custodians in place. Kevin Hossi, Diane Malillo, and Beaumont Buford have all started.
And Karen, thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, Mr. President.
Say something?
Sure.
The work that you did at Spring Garden, that was a donation from?
Not the educational foundation. Funded sensory pathways at Spring Garden in Lincoln. Was Lincoln the nice location? Thank you. I knew it was another one.
Excellent. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, we'll talk, we're going to, it's going to come up for discussion later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving over to our student representative.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my name's Ava Inzola, and I'm the Student Council Treasurer for my senior class. And I kind of just want to talk about what we value, what we've been doing for the school this year. So today during lunch, we created care packages for people that are going to the soup kitchen at Vincent and Stu's Church on Thanksgiving. So it included things such as tissues, chapstick, hand cream, hands sanitizer, tea, and hot chocolate. And it's kind of just something for them to take home and feel appreciated, besides like the whole food aspect. And on this Wednesday, the half-day, we're going to have a school skipping in the school. The cafeteria closes, so we are selling bagels, and it's kind of just a way to have people join the fun and to raise sales for our club. And each month we have a theme, and this theme for, for the month has been gratitude because it's November, so we thought it was very fitting to Thanksgiving. And every Monday we read an announcement that people should take out their phones and text someone that they are grateful for, and it kind of sets off a good note for the week, and people can feel appreciated very early in the morning. And this is partnered with the guidance and the school climate team, and it's kind of just to have a more welcoming, welcoming environment for everyone. And so for our future plans, we're having a toy drive on Friday, December 13th, and we will be partnering with Klee Cup to do this. The toys are for teens, and the donations go to North Children's Hospital. And our theme for that month, for December, will be generosity. And a sad note, we all know about James passing, and it definitely affected us because I do announcements, so we see him every day in the main office. And we thought that we should do something, an event, we're not sure what, but something that can go to the scholarship fund, because I've been informed that there's now a James scholarship. So I think that'll be very beneficial. And it's kind of hard, not everyone went to the memorial because they don't know him personally, so it's a different way to have students feel connected to him. And for another future plan, in this, in the fall, we had a film fest, and we had people come out and watch a movie, pay for snacks. We want to have one in the spring because we had a decent turnout. Our homecoming dances attendance were very low, and we want to improve that. And we want to have another service day. We had one, it was successful. We had students go to Washington School, work with the Family Service Bureau, and clean up our school library. And for the spring, my brother is working with the Van Riper House, so I'm trying to convince him to have students help clean up. We've already had one cleanup, but I want another one. And we are planning a games day, which is kind of our new decathlon. And this will have events like Jeopardy, poetry contests, video game competitions, and something like a water balloon play. So yeah, fun. That's, that's our plan.
Thank you. You're definitely the saleswoman of the house. No question. Thank you for the information. It was wonderful. I will tell you that if you can get some information out on any of the fundraising, me, myself, and my business, I would try to help in any way that I can. But certainly, when that does come together, whether it's through administration, just notify us as a board, we'll see what we can do to help promote the events and till we can to make it successful.
And what kinds of toys for teens? Like, tell me, give me some ideas.
First, what do you think?
Toys that, okay, so we want to kind of fit an age range for us, so it's, I feel like when people think toys, they think of more kiddish, like, so we're trying to promote, like, I don't know, something that we would want to see.
Video games, board games?
A board game or video game, yeah.
I'll just give you an idea of stuff to donate. Because I agree with you. You automatically go like.
You think you're fair, but then it's a teen's level.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to our committee reports. We're going to start off with Academic. Ms. Nancy McHorn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Academic Committee met on Monday, November 18th. Ms. Doyle Moreno and Ms. Vidal provided a comprehensive overview of the legal aspects of special education, a comparison with neighboring districts, including enrollment numbers, particularly for LLG and ABA programs, as well as how this impacts budget and programming. Both Ms. Doyle Moreno and Ms. Vidal answered questions regarding the Office of the Leadership of Law and where we have been successful in defending placements and services. Mr. Dwyer presented an articulation agreement between Kane University and the Nutley Public Schools, beginning in September 2020, for dual-credit course at Nutley High School in Holocaust and Genocide Studies. Additionally, staff would receive training and resources from Kane University Diversity Council and Resource Center, including speakers. Students will also have a chance to visit the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum in Washington, DC. The course will be included for the fall and as the program of studies develops. Ms. Locan Solo detailed several changes to the elementary mathematics report card language in real-time. These changes reflect the actual instruction and attainment of skills in grades K through 12. There are no changes in grades 3 through 5 or for grade 6. Mr. Banyu reviewed the requests for interns, student teachers, and clinical experiences. Dr. Glazer reviewed tonight's board presentations. Dr. Glazer reviewed the proposed BOE meeting dates for 2020. Mr. Banyu reviewed field trips and professional development requests, and Dr. Glazer provided an update on staffing and provided legal updates. The next meeting of the Academic Committee will be Wednesday, December 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy McHorn. Next up, Administration, Mr. Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And don't mean to be redundant, but pretty much the same stuff was discussed at the Administration meeting. Ms. Doyle Moreno provided a comprehensive overview of legal aspects of special education. Dr. Glazer provided an update on the curricula at Washington School. We know about the electricity at Washington School being turned off on November 23rd. Dr. Glazer reviewed Information and Finance Committee regarding proposed upgrades to the Oval. Dr. Glazer shared equipment and software from Raptor, the kiosk for the secure entrance. Dr. Glazer reviewed tonight's board presentation. Dr. Glazer reviewed the proposed BOE meeting dates for 2020, which, as you'll see, one has been amended for tonight. Also discussed the legal updates regarding pending litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski. Next up is Finance. Mr. Ferraro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on November 14th. The Order reviewed the June 30th, 2019 financial reports and order results, which is being presented tonight, was presented tonight. Mr. Porigi provided an update on the Spring Garden trailer installation. He provided the committee information related to the need to replace the Fordham Sewer High at Washington School, which is estimated to cost $16,000. Mr. Porigi updated the Committee on Work Orders and Winter Preparation of All Equipment and Vehicles. The Committee reviewed the architect proposals for the turf field project, which is slated to occur sometime in the summer of 2020. The Committee's recommendations are on tonight's agenda, the board approval. Ms. Yeannis reviewed the November 25th, tonight's for Finance Resolutions, including transfers, donations, and contract renewals. Ms. Yeannis and Dr. Glazer, I believe, will be meeting or has met with the administrative team to plan out the next year's budget. Dr. Glazer reported on the annual tree lighting meeting that she attended as well as personal matters. And our next meeting has not yet been set for December.
December 12th.
It is set for 12th, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. I'm sorry, to follow up.
4:00.
To follow up, and Administration is going to be December 12th at 6:00.
5:30 or so.
5:30, okay.
We'll try, because we have, so the concert season begins, and there's almost one a night, so sometimes two a night. So I'll try and get you out in time to.
I saw that in a brief, do we know the times?
For the concerts?
Concerts.
So I didn't put it in because there was some conflicting information. I've asked Dr. Riley to give us a definitive.
I've asked Dr. Riley to give us a definitive list, and as soon as I have that out on Sunday, I'll for everybody.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Those are around 7:00.
Sorry?
Typically around 7:00.
Okay, last one up, Ms. Arrow. I think you got the shortest notes at the most work.
Well, not tonight, tonight she has three pages of notes, good luck.
No, no, she's got shortened, she's got shortened notes, and we did the most work this evening.
So first thing I wanted to do was thank everybody, the Policy Committee meeting for, say, hours, and going through as many policies as we did. The Policy Committee met November 18th. We reviewed the policies and regulations that are on for the first reading tonight. Too many to read, they're on page 11 and 12 of the agenda. Additionally, we reviewed Regulation Order 3270 related to lesson plans and plan books. There was a discussion regarding purpose, compliance, oversight, and what would be included, and it was returned back to the administrative team for further discussion. And we will next meet Wednesday, December 11th.
Shortest notes?
It's a pleasure to read the whole one.
Thank you, Ms. Arrow. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board for the agenda, we allow questions or comments, and only resolutions addressing tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember, always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with a conclusion before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard on resolution for tonight's agenda please step forward? Seeing none. Ms. Dancheck Martin, take academic, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions 1 through 4 as written.
Discussion.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow? Yes. Mr. Conacella?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, take Administration, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move resolutions 1 through 5.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow? Yes. Mr. Conacella?
Yes. Mr. Ferraro, will you take Finance, please?
Yes, Mr. Kuzinski, I move the Finance Resolutions 1 through 20.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President. I, uh, I spoke to you and Mr. Ferraro about number 14, which, which I think is a good choice. I would, and as I mentioned to both of you, I would hope that we would not disregard the input of the township of Nutley. Some of the work we are going to be doing, or they might be doing, I think would be redundant as to what's already been done by some departments in the town of Nutley, and I think it would be of us to work in conjunction with them. And I know we talked, and I, I know it's on your agenda to look at it.
Yeah, we've talked, you and I talked about that, and you talked about it in the Finance Committee. One of the things we're gonna do is we're gonna meet with the architect. I know that we're gonna have Mr. Paolo and some of the other staff here, Mr. Pariji. We're gonna meet to see what, um, what is it that they're looking to do. And then we will obviously bring in, hopefully, other people that are familiar with it from the town perspective to, uh, to come up with what's there, what's existing, what are some of the issues that are, that they're aware of, that we're not aware of on the town, on the, on the site.
I know, but I'm sure.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, number three, I understand the check number 20726.
207.
726, thank you.
Mr. Conacella?
Yes. Mr. Schlerer, will you take Personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Personnel Resolutions 1 and 2 as we.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Conacella?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Arrow, will you take Call of Duty, please?
I would like to move policy resolution on that state.
Fourth-page, oh, the fourth-page resolution.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Conacella?
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our Regulation Law 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with a conclusion before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard on all district matters please step forward? Seeing none. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
So I put on the new business, there's two different things I'd like to cover. One is, you might have seen this week that Deborah Picora passed away. She was one of the first students that was 21-years-old and graduated out, and was the first person to belong to the, yes, one of the first students, the SYA program started. With, I was still behind, but Charlie was there in the basement of the fire ass under Carmen Recchio. And she is the last one of that first, first person that graduated from our school to be, had survived. So I really, it was, she was really a great thing, and it's been ongoing forever. So that was really the origination of SYA, and she was that one of the first students and the last one to be living now, so just wanted to mention that, because she was, her family was very involved. In fact, her, um, her brother, Dr. Picora, is the head of the cancer at Hackensack Medical University. Number two, I just wanted to, Nutley Hall fame, if you, if you watch it on tape, it was filmed, but how many, um, people that have gone on, that graduated Nutley, and everyone talked about their Nutley school system, whether it was art, and the libraries, and the lawyer that's now with the MBA and those programs, but all talked about, it was all about teachers in Nutley, and they named the teachers in Nutley, and named the schools in Nutley. And that was really a great thing to hear from them, the way they talked, so I just, just wanted to bring that out. Also, thank everybody, you know, because you forget how many boards before us have done things to make students successful, and that's what we're here for. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak on those two subjects.
Thank you, Ms. Schlerer. Ms. Schlerer.
I, okay, I just have, actually, there are two requests. The first one is in regards to that horrible tragedy that happened a few weeks ago with that little boy that was shot during that game down, I can't remember where.
Please don't.
So I was just wondering if we could, um, update our security measures or review our security measures with the chief of police or whoever our first responders are, so that we know as a board what we can provide, what security we can provide in those types of situations. Because it gets a little, it's difficult out there, you know, it gets appealed, it's open to the public, it's just very open, so I was just, it's just a request.
Yeah, and, and as you know, we, we do the ongoing security updates. We have one that's gonna be upcoming, correct?
Yeah.
Internal.
I, I put a December meeting date, but not everybody could do it. We have the active shooter training also that week, so I think we're gonna end up doing it the following week. We do that on an ongoing basis. I mean, I talked to the chief yesterday and today. It, it's a constant conversation. Every time there's an event, every time there's a game, we actually meet to plan. It's unfortunate that in this world that we, we are having these conversations, but as we've talked about, that's the world we live in, there's no guarantees, and we, we have done a tremendous job, not, not just the board, not just our first responders, not just our police, in, in putting in those layers of security that hopefully will be a deterrent, and hopefully, um, keep our, our community safe.
And I just had one other request. I had gone to the, um, high school meeting, PTO meeting last week, and they were going over all the different programs that they have in the high school, and it was very, it was a great, um, presentation. And I was just thinking, one of the parents had asked about a program that we had in districts years ago, and it was called the CHAMP Program, it was a mentoring program. And it was started maybe like 10 years ago, I, I can't remember. But anyway, um, someone asked the, I, I believe it was the Guides Council, and she said it's not in.
Tell us what it is.
So it is a mentoring program for the high school. The high school students would be coming as mentors for the elementary students who needed to have a big brother, it was like a big brother. Well, anyway, I went through my file, and I found the copy, so I wanted to just give the clues.
Please.
So that we.
What is that?
Yes, you know, I know, it, it goes, it's a great resource, but it, it really explains, um, what, you know, for children who are, who really need a big brother.
No, that's awesome.
So if you have any questions, let me know.
I will, that's great, thank you. It wasn't, it wasn't in the schools, it was the township?
It was, it was the township did it, it was in, in Martin Shuckin, yeah.
It was a partnership.
And, and the first page you can see who was involved, the second page, actually.
Great, thank you. Oh, wow, people I worked with in other districts. That's great.
We're trying to, we're actually trying to work towards doing something similar to this on the special education side as well.
Perfect, thank you.
You're up there, Ms. Dancheck Martin.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that I attended the Health Services Advisory Committee meeting on Monday, November 18th. For those of you that might not be familiar, currently Nutley partners with Rutgers University School of Health Related Professions to offer dual enrollment courses, and the students can earn credits from Rutgers University. Students can enter the program either sophomore or junior year and earn over 20 college credits. The students can also become members of HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America, where they can participate in leadership conferences, health-related competitions, shadow healthcare professionals, and network with our students and professionals in the field. This is a career pathway that's in one of the largest growing fields, which includes opportunities in around 300 different job categories. Dr. Riley's in the process of completing an application to have our program officially recognized by the state and approved for Perkins Grants. And once the application and program is approved, the district hosts to take advantage of some available funding. So it's a really good resource for the children. We want to try to get the word out to especially freshmen and eighth graders that this program exists, because a lot of people don't take, um, don't know about it, might not take, um, some of these, you know, know to take some of the courses.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Anyone else, any business? All right, we're at the Board of Education. We discuss some matters, example of our discussion, the NVSA 1004-4-1. Now therefore we stop, and the Board of Education resents to close executive session, and it's time to discuss the matters personnel contracts. If the further result of the discussion will be public by noon on the agenda of subsequent meeting, the Board of Education will, in reasons for discussing such matters, close session and long greet this. And we have a motion to go into closures.
Make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And for everyone in our wonderful community of Nutley, enjoy your Thanksgiving. Be safe, be well, and we get started again on December 1st. Thank you.